Planning Board Meeting, October 13th of 2016. Those present are Steph Badger, Bill Terry, Chris McElure, Kathleen Doctordy, Betsy Harding, and myself, Sarah Kimble. And I guess the first order of business would be to approve the minutes. Anyone have a copy of the minutes? Which were cobbled together from various authors.
They were great minutes, I'll tell you. No thanks to me.
Well, since I wasn't here, I can't really say if they were accurate or not.
All right, well, the rest of you.
Except the minutes.
I check it.
Okay, all those in favor?
I can't remember how many people can vote.
Every, well, at this point.
Everyone today.
Today, it would be everyone.
Okay.
Yeah. And that is another matter we need to take care of, which is, one of you two guys gets to be a full member. Do.
Rock, paper, scissors? We can flip, I don't care. I'll be the alternate.
Well, as long as you're both coming.
So did the selectmen lead it up to us?
No, actually, Dick said that he wanted to talk about that tonight, up to the planning boards, what they wanted, and I said, "It's a dislike them decision." And he said that, Chris, I think it was, that you'd said that you'd be an alternate, and now you want to be an alternate.
No, I wanted to be a full-time, I asked to be a full-time.
He had asked me, that, he said, "Well, we'll have to choose one of you." I said, "That's fine by me," that's all I said. I didn't say, I didn't, or I did, I just, I just said, "Go ahead."
No, I thought you were just checking for voting for tonight, but, no, I would like to come over.
Well, it's certainly very possible that we'll have another person dropping out. I don't know if Darren is really going to.
Well, Darren's an alternate now.
Oh, is he an alternate? Okay.
I got the.
One, two, three, four, five.
Jason.
Oh, Jason, that's right. Yes, and it should be on the record that both Jason and Dick Bennett have said they would be unable to attend tonight's meeting.
Right. So are you guys gonna have a duel or something?
You wanna just flip a coin?
Well, I think Terry just said he'd like to be a full-time member, right?
Yeah, okay, there you go.
All right, fine, we'll relay that to the, to the selectmen.
It doesn't really matter, Chris, you're gonna vote anyway, so.
Most likely, we'll end up with, you know, somebody absent. All right, well, I will then call, I don't have an agenda for me. The next public hearing. And is there anybody in the audience that has something that's not on our agenda? You are on the agenda, right? Okay, we're all voting, and minutes, so I'm going to open the public hearing on the master plan update, and if there is anybody in the audience who has anything, any comments to make on it, I will hear them. Hearing none, then I will put it to the planning board. Do we want to officially approve the master plan as it now stands?
I'll make a motion to approve that. I think we've worked long and hard on it, it's high time that we get it finalized, and welcome Kathleen's photos, and get it all into the best polished copy we can do.
No, second that.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Good. So, does anybody have a nice, anybody have a nice dark black pen? Because I have, the first sheet is the adoption.
It's a blue, it's not black.
This is probably acceptable.
Given that, okay, yeah.
Thanks.
I'm looking at the last copy of the master plan. I have Willis Kelly, Brooke Stodge, Dick Bennett, Stephen Weider, Bob Dupree, Betsy Harding, Sarah Kimble, and Ira Lynn. Were on the planning board on August 14th, 2003. Then, there's also a page that thanks everybody who contributed in one way or another to the master plan. And I've started a list, and there's all of us, and, can you think of.
Are you gonna put anything about, I know he's passed away, Don Larry, in there, because he really did.
Yep, Larry's definitely.
Yeah, and Bee did too, for a while.
Yep, I've got Bee on the list.
Do you know who's.
Bee's.
Did.
What?
That she had a stroke?
That she had a stroke.
Oh, no.
Is she home now?
I don't know, I don't, I don't know, I just didn't know if anybody knew any of which.
When did that happen?
Not this past Tuesday, I think it was the Tuesday before, I think that's what the girls told me. But they said she was talking, and there was just a problem with her left leg, but I don't know anything more than that, that's just hearsay, I don't know that for sure.
Okay.
And she's over at Main Bed.
Oh, wow.
She's over at Main.
Okay. Anyone else? John Allen gave the, to the girls in the office to help out on the town business, and what came is obviously written by some others. Does anybody know who contributed, or gonna have to ask John about that? As far as solid waste, and fire, and police reports.
Oh, they were all, well, the police report I know came from Doug. The Tom, what's Tom's last name? Craig, or something? He comes in all the time. He did part of it for the.
Transfer station?
No, he's the emergency.
EMT?
Yeah.
For ambulance?
No, he's the emergency home security, whatever it is.
Oh.
Yeah.
Is there anything, I don't think we have any.
Does that have to do with the health thing in there on that?
Health.
I do cemetery.
Cemetery.
But he might not have, I mean.
Probably earned it, isn't he?
But you can ask the girls on that one.
I will, okay.
What they wrote last time.
Then there was.
Damn good, there's a couple numbers.
Fire?
Would be Jay Henry, right? I know, he, well, yeah, he was still chief of the police at that time, right?
My genius was insane, that the former one.
Yes.
And not mess with quality.
Chief of the.
No, exactly. Don't mess with it, they.
Okay, I'll, I'll check with the girls.
Highway, who was? Jane was both, chief of police and highway at the time we were getting those numbers.
Fire, not police.
Fire and, highway, fire highway.
Police on the brain.
Because I remember when they all came in to submit their stuff to the girls, this is gonna.
Yeah, that's, I wanna acknowledge everybody who helped out. Okay? So, did you get all the way around?
Do you know who's on the cemetery committee?
Well, Barbatario is involved with that.
Yeah, and then who else? I can't remember who we talked to.
Oh, I don't know. Alicia Hawks, maybe?
Oh.
I mean, I don't know.
Is there anybody else?
Sounds like.
Well, no, if I hear the name, I might remember.
We should definitely mention Phil Davies.
At the moment.
And the people who submitted the surveys.
Okay.
Phil Davies, for those who were later members here, did the analyzing of the surveys that people filled out in 2014, and converted them into these patriotic colors.
Which is in the.
Sort of background.
The back, it's in the background, it's the last sheet.
And did I recall that we, we threw out the, the state estimates, or whoever that was, the trends, we threw that all out, didn't we?
But he rewrote it.
The amazing thing is that.
In the background.
The, whichever survey it was, said that we had 833 residents in 2010, and I checked with the, the people who were doing the voter registration, and 849 people voted just two years later. So, given the fact that not everybody voted, it was something like an 85 percent voter turnout, and that some, there are some children who don't vote.
Sure, yeah.
We know that there were more than 833 people.
Right.
In town, so, the other numbers were just over 1,000, and it seemed logical to take that number instead of the 833.
But it was some of the other issues there, that I recall.
Yes.
That, you know, like, 25 percent of all the mothers in town are single and impoverished.
Yeah, they put that back in again.
They put that back, you.
Well, it's in there.
The numbers actually were different, the ones that I saw were something like 6 percent or something.
They're in, they're in here, because I looked at them tonight.
In this.
Okay, employment.
No, they're still in there, let me get it.
Would be under what population for housing?
I sent it over to Sarah, and then I think we sent it out to everybody.
We did, and I think I sent it out all, one of the editions that came out highlighted in red, or flagged, because when it got photocopied, it was completely gray. All right, now what we have is, it's on page 18 of the final copy, Jackson residents, family type.
On page 18, yeah, individuals below the poverty level, 6.1 percent.
But those were our numbers, not the survey numbers, not the, the outside survey numbers, those we threw out, that's all.
No, this came from the American Community Survey, it was actually the New Hampshire Employment Security Office that provided that.
Page 18, the very last tiny little line.
Okay.
You see it? Do you not have them yours?
No, I got them here.
Okay, is that down there, Community Survey?
Yep.
Okay, and then the number of families with female householders, 38. No husband present, is that still, this was 19, I mean, is it 2014?
2014, does that seem right?
I don't know, that's what it says, I mean, when come Jackson residents, it's a survey, we only did the 2014, we put a little bit of 2015 in there, but.
Well, no, that would be from the, that's the.
American Community Survey.
American Community Survey.
Yeah, I did leave out the bottom part, there were things where, the families with female householders, no husband present, it ended up saying that 36.8 percent were below the poverty level, and I did leave that line out.
Okay, that's all our.
Yeah, that was, I think, the one.
That was the alarming.
That was really alarming, and didn't seem close to the mark.
But what about this one that says here on page 18, says 38? 38, families with female.
That's total number of families with female householders, but no husband present, that's just single mothers.
That's different than the other one you were talking about?
Right, because it was, it was 36.8 percent. The number before was 37 families with, that were female, head of household, no husband present, but then, the next line down was with owner or related children under 18 years old, there were 19 of them, and 36.8 percent were underneath the poverty.
But you left that out as a new one.
I left that out.
Okay, 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 okay.
It just didn't seem either accurate, or relevant, or.
Okay, okay, okay.
Or possible?
Or possible. Right, considering the size of the school.
And individual below the poverty level, there's 6.1 percent here in town?
That's 2014 numbers, that were the New Hampshire Employment Security Office numbers.
That seems like a lot.
It does, well.
Well, 6 percent of 1,000 is.
60.
Individuals. Family of three, 20 families.
That doesn't seem right, we should do something about that, if that's the case.
Well, it's definitely something to be concerned about.
I mean, it's not our job to be concerned about it, but it just seems like a community we should be concerned about.
Exactly, exactly.
If that is.
We're not the ones who can do anything necessarily about that, but as a community, we, as a group, we can certainly alert the community to the concerns about it.
Can we find out how those numbers were derived? Or where they come from exactly, what kind, you know, is that, people filing for, you know, for unemployment, or, you know, what's, where does that.
Or is that just a survey load based on county data, you know, who knows?
Yeah, I don't know. It's bound to be reasonably close, because it's New Hampshire Employment Security, you'd think that they would have the numbers.
But I guess the question is, is it a statistically derived number, or is it, you know, based on.
Averages, yeah.
Actual data points.
Yep. All right. Gentlemen in the hall, are you from the, from the Wentworth?
Yes.
Okay, if, if you're ready, we could.
Okay. All right, yeah, I knew you were, and I was.
Well, we had such a large crowd for the.
We had to put it off.
I'll be ready.
Okay, certainly. And if you think of anybody else for thanking on the master plan, let me know, okay, I'll put that together.
Are you gonna call the girls in the morning?
Okay.
Could you put them over there?
Is there a clipbook, Tom?
Is, is there a clipbook? I can lay them in, I could lay them in the middle to give you a sense of what we're, what we're doing. Yes, two most pertinent plans.
You just have one copy.
Thank you.
What this is, is oriented the same way. So, this is the Wentworth condominium, the original approved plan, and the Condominium Association, Mike Mallot as owner of Limited Common 22, which is the golf course, and the hotel, which is Limited Common 21, Fritz Kopel, they, they want to clearly define the limits of their, of their limited common areas. They, they were not, and whenever you look at work that you did 30-odd years ago, you wish you could turn back the clock and do them more clearly, and for instance, the Limited Common 22, you can see the outline here, and it comes up, and then I've got a match line. Here, where this came across, matched here, came around the, like so, and then you can see here, on this side, we say LC 21, and on here, LC 22, but when you look over here, there's no sort of northerly boundary of LC 21, and we've got a, these spaces in here were convertible areas, where units could be built, and so, this isn't part of LC 21, but it's where the limits are, really wasn't defined. We show one line here, and I was just talking with Tim Schellner, who's the owner of the Herlen House, about that, and it shows limited common going up to here, there was LC 21, and over here, it's got an LC 21, LC 21, so they owned in this place. So, the idea is to define these, now that.
How is it recorded? As far as ownership.
It just, it just says, as shown, the LC is shown on the plan.
Wow.
So, there was no meets and bounds, it were just these dashed lines saying, okay, here's where we own. So, of course, the units didn't get built exactly as is shown here, they got built in these, inside of these convertible spaces, is where the units got built, and, so now, if you look, you know, like, buildings 1, 2, 3, and 4, those were kind of like what was shown on the plan.
This is the existing?
Yes, this is what exists today.
And this, that's the plan?
Yeah, this was the original, yeah, this was in 83, and this is, this is the plan that we would like to come before the board ultimately, and the purpose of tonight's meeting is kind of show you what they're trying to accomplish, see what kind of plan that you're, you know, that you folks, and what kind of a process, because like, if you look here, here's the private road, goes up, and there's a, you know, right-of-way in here, and this was identified as 2.06 acres, and what they want to do is define the limited common that goes with unit 21 as being the edge of the pavement, so, you know, the, the limits of the right-of-way still stays where it is, but the limited common will, will follow the edge of pavement, which is, like, this road didn't even show up when, when limited commons were defined, and there was.
And is it the same scale?
They are the same scale.
So this goes further than what was indicated?
Yeah, probably does. Yeah, it does. The road was stopping somewhere in this area.
But now, it comes up to.
Comes all the way up to here. And there were, I mean, there were subsequent revisions, I could, I mean, it certainly could bring in all the different permutations, like this road, which, there's a right-of-way here, where the road comes, comes across, that was never even ladded, you know, in this instance. So there were subsequent revisions, but the whole, in any of these iterations, there was never meets and bounds put on the, the limited common, and so, they've been working, started out with, with Limited Common 22 in the association, Mike Mallot wanting to define the golf course, because you can see, he's got, he's got two Ts on, on this side of the road.
Two what?
Two golf Ts.
Oh, Ts.
Yeah, so, you know, wants to make it clear that, you know, this is, this is part of his, and it's not common land, and so, you know, they've gone around, I mean, we physically staked things years ago for them to get a sense, so that the, so that the association could meet on these and say, yes, this is okay, this, can you move this here? And, so that's, the, the purpose of all of this is to, to define these with meets and bounds, get, get a new plan that shows all, because this is three sheet, a three-sheet set in both instances, so this is the other provision. One sheet. Let's see if I get this. And this is over, Route 16.
Right, this is done by Ellis, it's on, to the south.
Yeah, this way. So, this, this matches right here, so you can see, LC 22 just kind of stops here, but yet, all of this is identified as Limited Common 22, and so, it's, we're, we're trying to just define it, and what we want to do, you can't, you cannot record a plan at the Registry of Deeds without a plat recording certificate, or the planning board's signature, so, we want to create a plan that shows the meets and bounds, it's voted on by the association, it's voted on by all of the, the parties, and then come before you, and go through whatever process you think is, is required, it's either, it could either be handled like an has-built, where condominiums, and this is showing the has-built information, or it can be an amendment to the.
How much land does the common land represent of the entire course?
Oh, boy, on here, I don't know if it's defined, because I mean, like, this, this was the, what was referred to as the castle property, or Wentworth Castle.
And that's owned by.
That was all, that's, that was now, that was, that was converted, meaning it was, it was sold out of the original development, and then, they did, what's it called, Mira, not.
Fallsland?
Yes, Jackson Falls was what that one was called back then, and then, this was withdrawn, and that became Mira Lake, you know, the Mira Lake Development.
Okay, so these, then, is a separate, as far as the registry is concerned, that's a separate parcel, a separate ownership.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, see, that was convertible, withdrawable land, and it got withdrawn after 1983, so this was withdrawn, and that got taken out.
So what's the outline of the parcel?
The total parcel that is under ownership, not by, owned by somebody else, but.
Is that out to here, then?
Well, yeah, that, this is, this is how it was in 83, as I said, there's been subsequent revisions, but these plans kind of show the three-sheet set that exists today, so, this one, this is, this one sort of matches this plan, if you see, so there was, Limited Common 22 was 43.5 acres for this, this part of it, 10.66 for the part between Green Hill Road and Route 16, this .42 didn't change, neither did the 10.66, this was never identified here, of the acreage, let's say, and then, these match like so, so then, on this side, this is 31, 31 acres in here, all this land is either Wentworth or Mallot, is that correct? No, this is either, it's either Mallot Corporation, or, or it is the Condominium Association.
Okay.
And then there are, see, there's, there's common land, which is, which is owned in one, you know, one fraction of all the units, and then there's limited common land, which is land that's owned by everyone, but only the unit owner that the limited common is associated with has the rights to. So that's, so that's what happens with limited common land, so technically, Limited Common 22 is common to everyone, but only Mike Mallot has the rights to do anything with it.
Why do they all have the same number, 22?
Because, because if this is all, all of this orange is, is what Mike Mallot has ownership of.
Yeah. Okay, now, as far as, then, the land outside of this.
That is, that is true common land, which is, everyone has ownership in it.
Everyone?
I mean, everyone has rights to it, I should say.
It's still private land?
It is private land, yes, it's just for the, for the Condominium Association.
Okay.
So every unit owner has, has.
So, of the overall parcel, what percentage is common land, do you know?
I don't know the answer to that.
More than 25?
Okay, so the.
Because that's the current.
As far as the registry is concerned, then, only the association.
So this, so all of this is common land up here, I'll be, I'll, that's one of the things, I may know the common land.
And do we discriminate between common land and limited common land in our ordinance?
I don't think so.
I don't think we say anything.
So it's just con, all the.
It's just condominium wording, kind of.
But basically, we would count both limited common land and common land as common land.
I think so.
So how far along are all the parties in sort of being, coming together on this? Is there any, any contentiousness in?
Well, the only thing I had, I had, I called Tim, because this was a non-nordest hearing, and there's been conversation between the hotel and Tim, who owns this unit, because of some activity that's been going on down slope side here, to say, I know that, you know, this is, this is unlining on the, on the planning board, and on us as actors, but, you know, I'm gonna ask for kind of some guidance, and. but I'm going to ask for kind of some guidance, and you might as well come and be a part of, and hear what the board has to say.
So Tim, do you own your house and the land on it, or are you part of this, the whole association?
I'm a condominium, actually.
You're...
I'm a condo unit.
Condo unit.
And we're a very unique condo unit, in that we're not a part of the association. Which puts me in a weird place, because I'm actually one of four owners, right? It's me, the hotel, Mike, Mike Mallett, the golf course, and then the condominium association. So there's four of us, all around the four, I ironically.
So you're a principal?
I guess.
Isn't this the house?
Yes, yeah, that's...
But it's the condominium house.
What are you looking to have done, from your perspective?
I'm just concerned about the changes that are occurring.
But hasn't that house been there forever?
Yeah, that was, that was originally part of the original Wentworth Resort.
Oh, it was?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, there's, well, I don't know how much you're aware of it, but there's been a little gazebo built.
Yeah, and a lot of rif activity along there for weddings and like.
And of course, at first we didn't give it a second thought, looked great, looks nice back there.
Where is that gazebo, I don't know?
It's right there.
Oh, it's still, it's on the east side?
It's a nice gazebo, looks great back there. But then what happened is, we started to get a lot of vehicle traffic back there. So there's a lot of vehicles, a lot of setup. At first it was just a couple of small weddings, which were quick. But now those have turned into quite extravagant setups with panels and stakes and... So anyway, we've had a lot of broken pipes, our septic system is located back there. So we've had to do a lot of repair, we had to repair the top of the tank for getting driven over.
So they were broken by the activity there?
Yeah, they drove over the vehicle or, yeah.
And they didn't pay for it?
Nope, well, I mean, all I know is that a car drove over it, I don't know who did it.
So hopefully it marked the area off, so nobody drives over it again.
Well, when we first moved in, it, of course, it was all open, so cars could freely drive back there, but nobody did. And luckily Peter Gellie just said, wait a minute, there were a couple of rocks there, you know, this couple of rocks. And that did attract, and then no cars went back there for years until the weddings started again. And then we started to get a lot of traffic.
More rocks?
You mean more rocks?
Well, yeah, some of the stops off.
Or trees.
Yeah, but rocks are harder to blow.
Well, I went back and dug into our deeds to see, you know, what really was, you know, what is this property? And that whole piece then, the convertible end zero, goes from the, from the stone bridge all the way up to Jackson Falls. The whole piece is considered one, this side is one piece.
And all those houses too?
No, not the two houses, they're separate, they're parceled out.
But the land behind them, close to the river, is a part of?
Part of, right, that's the common land, so it's part of Wentworth common land, so I bought it, and then they dedicate a few items, like they dedicate the parking and the little dance studio, they call it, it used to be a dance studio, to the hotel, and also the swimming pool goes to the hotel. It was a pool, a concrete pool, it's up here, and that is dedicated to the hotel.
You mean the one that's in the river?
Yeah.
The scenario, right?
It's a little common, it's not all, it's all there anymore, but you can sell the concrete.
Yep.
So were you not given an opportunity to buy a, to get a lot with your condo?
No.
And why, just because they were going to get the land?
It was, it's not like, it's just like any other condo, it's uncommon land.
And you knew that when you bought it, moved in?
Well, when we purchased it, they described it, this is a condominium, you are a part of this development, you share this land with everybody else, this unique piece on this side of the, of the road is a unique piece, because it's also entirely open to the public, public access for the entire whole. And it also says, no structures can ever be built.
So the gazebo was built after that? The gazebo wasn't there when it was made a condominium?
No, that was, the gazebo, I guess, is five years, I think?
And that was built by Wentworth or by the association?
By Wentworth, by Fritz. To my knowledge, I don't, there's a building permit, they're using, they're coming in there, they're coming with the wedding garden.
And I think based on our current requirements, we're building to that size, and we don't really have a requirement.
Right.
Well, I think for a public structure, I think we do have...
Have to get a building permit?
It should have to have a building permit and be expected to...
outdoor buildings, there are no requirements?
Well, most people were in there and it collapsed. So I think it has to have a building permit. And I'm really startled that they could put it there without a condominium vote.
But is it that you don't vote as part of the association?
Yes, I do have a, if I am incorrect, centrally, I have a one-sixty-fourth of vote, just like, right, because there's sixty-four.
Seven and one-sixty-seventh.
Oh, sixty-seventh, yeah.
Even less of a vote?
Even less, yes.
You're the only one, because of your location, that would really care about the situation so much.
And Jim, are there specific parts of this that are actually going to be changing? Or is it just set sort of in concrete where the lines really are?
I mean, there are adjustments, definitely. In Tim's area, we have shown, if you work, I wanted to make sure he was here. So to compare, on the approved plan, here's the limits of LC twenty and LC twenty-one. So we have put meets and bounds to this, to this line. Now, the one thing that we've done is we've sort of added to, to it, it just stops at this retain, at this, at this stone wall, though the boundary of this parcel O is the center line of the thread of the Wildcat River, and not this sluiceway that was done for the old powerhouse and stuff. So we came over and just to the, to the center of the sluiceway, and then came back out to the, to the center line of the Wildcat River in that instance. So what we were trying to do, and then as I was talking out in the hallway with Tim, he was talking about this pool, and from the work that we've done so far, we believe this has limited common twenty-one up to here, but based on research that we've done, we think that this is now just common land, that everyone has the right to, not specifically the hotel. But I've made a note to look at that, because from our research, only this part is what the hotel has the limited right to.
Right, so that must have changed at some point in time.
Right, and I, and...
And probably eighty-seven, when they went through the wild scenic designation process, that they may have gone through that.
Well, I'm not sure, because there were easements, you know, the subsequent easements were granted to the town over, over this. So, you know, we're respecting this, and then we've stopped the limited common twenty-one here, even though the original showed it up to here, because we found research that indicates that limited common stopped and didn't go all the way up. This part has been withdrawn, and I think it was sold and fee to the town. And so, and so back to your question, are there changes, like, if you look here, this doesn't jog in anymore, doesn't sort of come in close to these units, so it does change. They, it hasn't changed here around in Tim's unit, but it has changed. It's been defined, because it never got, you know, there was never a northerly boundary sort of of limited common twenty-one on this side of, on the northwest side of Route sixteen B. So the association and the hotel have agreed to it here. And the association, there's been votes in the association, and the golf course, you know, Mike, have agreed to the boundaries that you see on here. So other than the dialogue that has to go on between Tim and the, you know, the hotel, and verification that we need to do to make sure that we haven't missed something here that says that, you know, limited common twenty-one goes further than we think it does.
Is this the only area of contention at this point?
Yeah.
It sounds like they're already...
It's the only point of discussion that we're aware of this. And the reason, you know, full disclosure, I was hired by the association, they started talking with me a year or more ago, and then subsequent, Tim called me to do a septic design, I thought it was on a separate log record, everything, and then all of a sudden I realized, I was like, wait a minute, this is, this is the Herlen House, this is in the condo. So then they called up, I said, hey, just so you know, we're doing work for the condominium, and then he started to tell me of the situation, you know, that he was having here.
Where exactly is, I don't see the gazebo, maybe?
But it wasn't there then?
Oh, okay.
It's here now, I wonder if it's... Yeah, yeah, it didn't exist in eighty-three.
Gotcha, I didn't know the dance studio, but...
Yeah, the dance studio was there in eighty-three.
Oh, but that's, that's ancient.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the Herlen House was all part of the original Wentworth Resort.
And the old parsonage, that's, is that up the road for you?
Yeah, the parsonage is...
So it's charming that the gazebo could have been put in five years without a condo vote, I don't really understand that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, we haven't seen...
I've never really been able to even put it, the ones that I've spoken to.
Can they move it down so it's not so close to your house? Or put it down here someplace?
It'd be nice if they moved it off of where my septic system is.
Exactly.
Wouldn't the septic system be on your property, not on the common property?
Well, that's a great question. Now, up until this new line drawn, I have, it was under my assumption that it was on common land, just like all other condominium septic systems are. They have to be on common land, right? So if they're on common land, we really don't, we don't get to use it. So it was kind of an non-issue, at least I felt it was. The change here, what's that? Well, yes, the change here is that now the hotel is claiming that my system is on their land. So they're claiming, this is them claiming ownership to that piece of land. Which they didn't before, but now it shows up.
Whereas in these drawings, it appears it's a common parcel.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, the common parcel here, in fact, this is eighty-three, or eighty-six when I wrote the deed, it's very vague as to the value of that limited common line. I was under the impression it didn't really exist. I thought it was just a common, a piece of common land. And you look at all the rights, the town has full rights, the public has full rights to that whole piece, and it's open as a scenic area for the public.
With foot traffic, that wouldn't be an issue, right? If I'm understanding you correctly?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And they said it's open to the public for scenic use, so we knew that in the draw.
So who maintains the actual plat there, is that the...
Well, that's an interesting point too, because when you talk about common land, all of it that's associated with the condominium association, has a maintenance agreement. But ours is out, it says specifically, nobody has any obligation to maintain this land. So I have been maintaining the whole area, and nobody maintained that area back until the town started cutting the lawn back there, oh, ten years ago maybe, maybe less, but they started running along more back there. And I think that's tied into the Wild and Scenic River Commission. Anyway, that's my short concern. So it's interesting to watch them evolve, but it feels to me as if there's a change in ownership of that parcel.
You're saying that the Wentworth is claiming, he's calling it now their parcel?
They have a gazebo on it, and now they're... Yes.
Now, septic systems with condos, are the condo owners responsible for their own septic systems? Or is that...
I have a copy of Tim's deed here, and it talks about he was conveyed unit twenty as shown on this plan, and then it says, "together with any and all limited common as shown on said plan as appurtenent to the unit, conveyed herein with an undivided one-sixty-seventh percent interest in the identified, or identified in the declaration of the condominium." So we haven't changed anything here, it sounds like the hotel is asserting different, they're making assertions that they didn't make before, but we haven't done anything to change the rights. And I think that's the point, that's the point of discussion. And we just need to understand, you know, we believe that whatever revisions have occurred between nineteen eighty-three, when Tim's deed was conveyed and the hotel, that we believe that this became not limited common land, but from this point upriver, it became all common for everyone.
Right, which is by the public that's accessed and they don't restrict?
Well, no, I think the town, also happened was an easement was granted to the town in addition to whatever happened to all of this land, including, including down here on LC twenty-one, on limited common twenty-one. I think the town also has easement down here.
So Wentworth is claiming this, what is the basis of their claim?
They have put a gazebo there.
Well, this plan shows it, this plan shows it as limited, so I'm going to look at their deed and make sure we have everything, and I'll bring that as well as part of our application. But without having the benefit of the deeds, this plan shows that they have the limited rights to this.
That Wentworth does?
Yes. And what I'm hearing from, you know, my conversations with Tim, is that they weren't exercising them for some period of time, and it was kind of good until they all of a sudden started doing more things.
And there's limited rights, right, that they can do what they want regardless?
Like, it's like you own a, you know, it's like, nobody, though this is common land around the Herlen House, only Tim has the exclusive rights to it. So the condominium owns a one-sixty-seventh interest, but they can't do anything on it, because it's strictly limited to him. That's, that's the difference between common land and limited common, is the exclusivity of the rights. And so they, you know, the original plans, and again, like I said, I actually haven't been the surveyor on record doing all of the details in this and other licensing, sorry.
Limited common land, who has the right?
So in, so in this case, whoever owns unit twenty-one, limited, unit twenty-one has the exclusive rights to limited common twenty-one. And so unit twenty-one is the hotel.
Right, so the hotel can do whatever they want.
So the hotel can do whatever they want. And the reason the septic system, you know, this, the septic system existed long before the condominium existed, and apparently nobody did any research to where it was, and just showed this limited common line, which apparently went over, you know, across the septic system.
Right, but in understanding what the deed says there, it also says that it's the property plus whatever was attached to it, and if the septic system had been attached?
Right, yeah, I don't think there's, I think there's no mechanism to prevent, you know, repair or replacement of the leach field from what I've read here quickly.
Yeah, I just, I would just hurt it, and I'm not looking at it like a lawyer does.
Right, well, and I'm no attorney, so, but, you know.
So originally, before eighty, was all this one great big parcel?
Yeah, and this was called Wentworth Resort in, back in the heyday, in the, I don't know, thirties, forties, twenties, maybe. And Astrakhan, Ed Astrakhan and Bernie Shannon bought it, and they started this whole idea of redeveloping it. And then they went, they started to have financial problems, and Ernie Mallett came in, and he purchased it, and they tore down a ton of the old historic buildings that were on here.
And was it eighty-three that the common land was?
Then eighty-three was when... Then eighty-three was when they finally got the approvals to condominiumize it into X number condominiums. I don't recall, but there were some units that never got built because you have five years to convert the convertible land, which is, was gonna be the units. You have five years to do that, and then you get a five-year extension. The developers, you know, took longer than ten years to develop it, and the attorney didn't alert them to the fact that they could lose the rights, and they lost the rights to build a bunch of them, and that, that convertible land became common land. And so there was a big lawsuit, and attorneys, liability insurance made a, made a, you know, compensation to the developer for the loss of the rights to build those units.
So I think, am I correct, Sarah, that we require, at least now, I don't know about eighty-three, but we require twenty-five percent common land within a condominium development?
Do we?
And so I guess my question is, where, curious, how much of the...
Do you remember where that is?
Well, if you push forward.
Push forward, yeah. At the top?
I'm curious, how much of the overall parcel is common land in eighty-three, I guess? And then what percentage of the common land, you know, represent the parcel?
Yeah, and I've made a note to find that out, because I can't, I honestly can't tell you what it is. I can see here from, if I can...
Yeah, it says twenty-five percent.
So this, so all of this, anything on this side of this orange line is, is common land now, with the exception of the units. So it's visually, this looks quite, quite large, like it probably exceeds twenty-five percent. I don't, you know, because this is an amendment to an existing condominium, and they're not changing any units, or not creating any units or anything, I don't know, you know, if they would have to conform or not.
And if that is the scale, it's at least twenty-five percent.
Right, yeah, it is the scale.
Okay, so that's the common land owned by the association, and that does not include the limited common land?
Correct.
So limited common land, I saw what you call land is underneath a condominium.
No, no, limited common is, it can be, it depends on how the documents are written.
Yeah.
I mean, a condominium is, a condominium is a form of ownership. Most people think of it as multifamily buildings or something, but...
Right.
So you can, you can have, condominium is a volume of space.
Right.
And you can, you can have a ground condominium where you go out and set pins, just like you would a lot.
Right.
And that can be your, that can be your unit, and then you can build a structure on that unit.
Right.
And in this case, you know, the, in this case, the units are inside these structures.
Right.
And probably...
And they don't own the condominiums?
They don't own the land underneath it, it's owned by common land. That's common land, it's not limited common.
Nope, it's not. I've never heard of it structured that way.
Yeah.
As opposed to the land unit development, which would have the property actually below it, is...
Well, so, and you can...
My own, it's, we have, I have the right to do what I want within a fifty-foot radius of the center of the structure.
Right, that's another...
But the land underneath is still part of the...
I mean, it's all in how the documents are written, because this is, this is even kind of remarkable, because, you know, in this instance, you know, the Herlen House, Tim's limited common surrounds it.
In the definition of their, kind of life enabled the...
In some, in one, one sort of feeling.
Oops.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay.
So what is it really that you're going to be asking us to do, if we hold a public hearing about something here, what will be proposals made?
I guess, Mike, what we're going to do, I don't know if you would call it a boundary line adjustment, if you would call it a condominium amendment, you know, it's, that's, you know, it may be, it could be an as-built. But it's, you know, typically, you know, when you do a condominium, the reason you do the as-built is for this reason they're here. So this is, this is what the planning board approved, and they said, okay, this unit is gonna be here. And the documents explain what the unit boundary is. It's probably to the, to the face of the studs, so that they can take off sheetrock and they can redo it, and that's, that's in their unit. So then, then what happens is, this building gets built, and it's not exactly built here. So you come in with an as-built plan, now you've actually physically, it's essentially you've surveyed the lot or the unit that they've just bought. And that's why planning boards sign as-bills to go, to go to the planning, uh, to go to registry. So it's, it's...
So the as-built alone just has to do with the buildings, it doesn't have to do with the boundaries?
Well, because, and again, it's, it's a function of documents, because if the documents say, you know, your, your unit is, is here, and you have limited common that is within fifty feet of the unit, well, if the unit was shown and approved here, and it got built here, then your limited common shifted with it, too.
Okay.
So it's, it's, you know, it, it's, it's an odd thing, and hence the reason I'm here, trying to, trying to get some guidance, so that I don't make it, you know, trying to just work through the process.
If it were an amendment to the condominium documents, it would be simply adding the meets and bounds?
Well, I think what they'll do is they'll, they will clarify, you know, I think they'll be, they'll, once, once whatever plan gets prepared and approved, it would get recorded. And then they would do confirmatory deeds or documents that will say, you know, from this point forward now, instead of where LC was shown on this plan, there'll be meets and bounds, there's monuments out there, and, you know...
As opposed to...
As opposed to a line, as opposed to a dashed line or a plan that...
Exactly, right, all the deeds that associate with that land.
Right.
Is there, is there land left to be developed?
No.
Nope.
So this is...
It's sort of, it is what it is. Right, so this isn't really a disputed thing, it's really more trying to document what, what is there?
And clarify, you know, where did the, where was the limits of limited common twenty-one on this side? And obviously, there's a, there's a...
And my expectation is that a situation where what is, is not for sure.
Right, I mean, I feel confident here, after looking at Tim's deed, that what we've shown by meets and bounds here is, is identical to what this line is on here.
Right.
What I don't feel comfortable representing to you tonight is that limited common twenty-one stops here, based on the conversation I've just had. And I, you know, so I wanna have the surveyor that's been doing this in my office confirm, gee, did, did some of, because this plan shows limited common twenty-one going all the way up to here. But he's shown it stopping here, which tells me that something between eighty-three and two thousand and sixteen occurred that might have extinguished there.
Yeah, okay, so that needs to be clarified.
So that, the other thing is you have a deed which does not match what that says.
Well, it, I mean, it does and it doesn't, because it says, you know, that it's, it's unit twenty shown on, on this plan, and as shown on, on this plan, together with any and all limited common area as shown on said plans. And so we, it shows the limited common.
Right.
And so, you know, that's...
But to the extent, if I am sure what you're saying, though, correct, if you draw the line the way it is now, represent that as limited common land, they could take that back area where that gazebo is, and if they got appropriate approvals, they could put a building there and take your septic system right out and say, sorry about it, you should have known that beforehand, that that wasn't part of what you bought.
Well, I guess, I think it's, it's two different things. They can do that today based on this plan.
But that's not what the deed says.
Yeah, that's what it is.
It says no structures. Well, that, that I don't know what... Just based on what you read to me just earlier, that's not what the deed says.
The deed says no structures, did you say?
No, I have a, yeah, I can present you with a lot more information, but I apologize for not bringing it here.
So what do you mean, no structures here?
That, that on the convertible land, oh, that, that piece of property which goes that entire piece.
Which has the gazebo on it?
That has a gazebo on it.
You have where it uses no structures?
It says, it does allow, what you're gonna, for a six-inch pipe to be brought down for irrigation purposes from the falls, down through there to provide, and right here with it, it says, no structures, this, this property can't be used for anything, no structures can be built, it's open for scenic use, people can enjoy it, have a picnic.
How does that couple with the fact that it was already structured there? The dance studio that they use now?
Oh, that's, that was, that was in there, that's just right. These, these are the pieces, yeah, the parking area and the dance studio were, were there, that are fine, they're part of, they're talked about, but no additional structures can be built.
And is the gazebo within seventy-five feet of the waterway?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's not allowed by that either?
By the, the conservation district doesn't permit it.
Let me, let me, I just said, yes, let me clear the measure again.
Is it small enough? Is it only a shelter? Have you told me that there is a way to create?
Not that I can see.
Accessory, accessory structure.
You have to go based on the idea that that is an outbuilding that is like a shed, like a garden shed or something, that you have a lawn or something like that.
Yeah, accessory structure.
In that case, yeah, you could probably win it for that, but that's not what it is.
I think that that, I mean, obviously, that's a, that's an issue that needs to be dealt with, but it's not a, it's, it's separate from defining...
Right.
But it may be an enforcement issue or something.
Needing to resolve that before you get that approved.
Yeah, it determines the uses that are permitted, I was only reading this page nine. The only remotely similar thing is number five point four point one point seven, uses or structures accessory to public open space, such as signs, shelters, picnic facilities, walkways, and the like.
So that could be a shelter.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a push. Well, it really isn't our...
No.
... many of...
But...
Shelters.
I think it's important for the town to consider.
So I guess our question is, what are you gonna need out of the planning board?
Beg your pardon?
What are you gonna need for the planning board? What is the...
Well, I mean, that's, that's the reason here is to find out, you know, it sounds like I'm, I will come with deeds of, you know, whatever rights exist for LC twenty-one to demonstrate, we'll, we'll have Tim's information, you know, his deeds and stuff, and if there's any stuff to help, if you think that I'm missing, I would love to have it.
It, I mean, it seems to me, and I mean, again, this is all new to me.
This is new to us, too, so.
It seems to me that, that what you folks need to do is to come up with a, with a plan that is agreeable to all parties, and then I think our job is simply to approve it or disapprove it based on whether we think it meets the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
But it's not, but it's not a subdivision, because it exists already.
Right.
It sounds like it's a clarification.
Right, it's, it's...
But wouldn't that, wouldn't that be something for the lawyers to do?
Well, yeah, but no, if they drew the lines, that, I mean, he's, what you're presenting to us right now is that you're drawing the lines as they exist.
And where they don't exist, we're trying to...
Right, my, my point is, is that you're not creating some unusual set of lines that misrepresent what the, way it's being used currently is.
Yeah, and I mean, essentially, what we're trying to do is take the documents, you know, the condominium documents, and, and their descriptions, and the recorded information, and clarify it, put meets and bounds on it, so that it, so that it, you know, is clearer. And, you know, the, the one thing I don't know is, I know, Tim and I haven't had this conversation either, but I know the condominium association, of which Tim has one sixty-seventh of, has taken a vote and approved this. So whether Tim is against it...
They approved the original answer?
You know, I don't know what, you know, there's...
Would you say that in Tim's interest, or are they just...
Well, because he's part of the condominium, and this is, again, all of this, all of this land was part of the original condominium. And so they are, you know, they, they've approved the changes that you see on, on the plan in terms of, like...
The boundaries.
That, that this will go along the edge of the pavement.
So they've approved the, the boundaries that you've drawn on the...
Right, yes. And they have said that now, again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna verify the thing there and encourage more...
Is this not a subdivision, given that they're redefining the common land?
No, I think it's, it sounds more like a clarification, or, because you're gonna have to change condominium documents, right?
They, I think they wanna do everything new. The reason they, we were trying to only show, because then it would be greater detail, you know, in a smaller scale, with places where it really changed. And they were like, we wanna show all of the common land, so that everything can get recorded, and we can do documents that will, will match the new recorded plans, and from this point forward.
Especially, you know, the golf course taking a piece on the other side of the road.
Right.
And that sort of thing, where that could, that could be a question in the future.
Right. I mean, it's, the intent is to clean everything up. The problem is, is, you know, there's been a use issue that's, that's caused, caused friction in the neighborhood.
So I guess as far as we're concerned, then you need to get everything cleared up as to how you're going to change condominium documents, and if everything is agreeable to all parties, then it would just be a matter of us having a look at it, make sure that it's, goes along with the zoning ordinance as it is now.
Okay.
And then we would just give our approval of that change or clarification of the boundaries.
And in that case, then, if there is a dispute between a deed that says there will be no structures on that land, and actually having a gazebo there, that then becomes a, I would guess, a matter for attorneys to work out. That's outside of our purview, I think.
Right, and it may, it may be an enforcement, I mean, there may be an enforcement issue for the town, like your building permits.
Right. As well as the deed issue at the same time.
Right, but that's probably not something that directly involves the planning board, but it's certainly worth pursuing.
Right, it's, it's something that needs, needs to be vetted.
So I think where we would become concerned is if the percentage of common land, and I think we would include the limited common land as part of the, you know, just all common land.
Yeah.
If the percentage of common land of the resulting common land was less than twenty-five percent, and if it were less than twenty-five percent, is it less than...
What it was originally.
Originally. So if what we would do about it, if it was, then we don't know.
Well, for example, if they prescribed this line across here, and said this was part of the Wentworth, was all over the common land, then we'd have a problem with it. Yeah, yeah, I think that right, right now, all of the, all of the ability to convert, to, to add units, you know, all of that is, that's gone. So what exists is what exists, and now they're trying to just clarify, you know, there's, anybody who's done any title work at the Registry of Deeds for Wentworth would see, you know, amendments after amendments, and both in documents and in plans. And, and the whole idea of this is from, you know, to clarify it, so that from this point forward, it can be one thing where no more changes are gonna happen.
Sounds like...
Until the next time. Yeah, until the next time.
Right, but then you're only dealing with one document that exists as opposed to...
Right, you're not, you're not looking for, looking for multiple ones.
So it's up to you to get all those, find all those pieces, and then to get it into one, okay?
Okay.
And once you've done that, I suspect you'll be back.
Yeah, so I, I guess, should we call it a condominium amendment? Should we call... Should we call it a, an ASBIL? Should we call it a, a boundary line adjustment?
I'd call it an ASBIL, I think, because essentially, you're not really changing, um, lines very much, you're adding meets and bounds to, I think, most of them under the same place. Are there ones that are changed?
It, it could also be a condom, it could be called a condominium site plan, because I think that's what RSA three fifty-six B calls it, is a, they, they call it, they say anytime you do a condominium, you submit a condominium site plan.
Okay, it's not in the planning?
Three fifty-six B is in there?
It's not in the planning, I mean, no.
Let me see if I.
But we don't do site plan reviews.
No, but that's what, that's what the, the towns, you know, call them subdivisions, a.
Three fifty-six B is in?
Three fifty-six B is in, boy.
Condominium.
They have a condominium act, yeah. I've got it here.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Great.
Twenty-eighty-three fifty-six B twenty.
Twenty-eighty-four, if you're in the book.
Great.
Three fifty-six D nineteen, D twenty. That there shall be recorded simultaneous with the declaration, one or more site plans. So they, they do call it a condominium site plan. Maybe that's to, to be consistent with the statute, maybe that's what we should, type of. But you put, uh, in.
New site plan, amended or?
Yeah, condominium site, I don't know if.
Site plan reclassification or something like that?
They just call it site plan, I think, you know, because you're, you're supposed to show, with, with the units and everything, you show either substantially complete, construction not yet complete, construction not yet begun. So all, everything is, you know, construction complete.
Well, so if that's what the RSA says, we might as well stick with that.
Yeah, so I'll, so we'll call it a condominium site plan, which I, I notice, Kevin actually has already called it a site plan, so that's, he's, he's already.
Seems like a pretty good start.
Yeah, so he's already ahead of me on that.
All right.
I'll, I'll talk to the contact, I've had the association and, 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 uh, see if we can get. This is where I saw some of the issues. All right, well, we'll be back, uh, once we get these plans in conceivable order and try to, to iron out the, the points of, the first one here.
Very good.
Good luck with it.
We'll see you then.
Did you find a mythical tunnel between the castle and the temple?
No, it is there. I wasn't aware they were supposed to leave.
There is, that's the legend. A tunnel between the castle and Wentworth that, that they used to bring food after they.
It goes right up into my house, I swear to God.
From there, we kind of sinkhole until we drive it over.
What was that then? I know Ernie, Ernie Mallett had a, he flew helicopters, he got his helicopter license, and we took a ton of aerial photographs out of the, out of the helicopter of all of the old structures before they came down. It was beautiful.
Yes, and I know we're on the plan, the potential helicopter site.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you see that right on my property?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you very much for your time.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
So we see here again. I sent this on yesterday, and I have a copy here, anybody who needs it. Do you have it?
Did you see the thing that Julie sent around from the state about accessory apartments?
That's the same thing.
Is this the same thing?
Yep. Same thing, that cabinet, yes, SB one forty-six.
Okay.
That's it.
Yeah, oh, good, I sounded bad, but I don't see it.
All right, so I, let it move on to. As I said, mulling about this as to what would make sense. Um, we have brought, actually have several issues that we need to address. The first one that I put up here is the accessory apartment, and that we say in nine point two right now that, uh, you have to have two dwelling units if you're gonna have an accessory apartment, and what? Kevin, uh, Bert Phillips said, uh, our last meeting is that the, uh, state requires you to have a septic system, that one system to cover four bedrooms, and that if you're then adding something with just two bedrooms, according to the model ordinance, then two bedrooms would only be point six of a, a lot.
So I don't understand, you say the state requires you to have four, because we just did one where we get approval for three bedrooms.
On, uh, what he says is, what he said was that the standard, uh, if you're applying for, um, you have your lot, you're building a house, you will get a, a septic system will be designed that would accommodate four bedrooms, and that if you have, if there were situations where, say, that you have a lot of record that is smaller than that and it only would handle three or two bedrooms, then the state would give you a permit for, um, the smaller septic system.
So I think, given that, that we need to work this so that, we're not saying four bedrooms, um.
Yeah, and, and they mentioned, like, you could put a two-bedroom woman on.
Yeah.
This is a piece we got from, uh, Cordell Johnston, if, I think he had on all the points, did everybody see that? We got it late today.
Yeah, one just came in for.
Yeah, we got it late today, and, um, I think he makes a lot of points that, you know, for example, that, I think what you're saying is that if you had a, uh, an apartment and you already have a, a house that's septic, is only four bathrooms or four bedrooms, and you put in two more, then you, you would probably have to do a, a separate septic system. However, if you had a permit for four and you only had two bedrooms in the existing, um, building, you could put on this apartment and with two bedrooms, and that would work just as long as you, you comply with the state rules, and, and that's, I think that's all it says, so it's not, it's not quite as complicated.
What I'm getting at is that, um, we referenced the, um, site-specific, site-specific soil matching, and the one thing that was the problem that we were talking about was the fact that.
Yeah, I didn't print it out, but you're, great.
That the lot size.
She left plenty of them here.
Oh, okay. What?
This is what Julie sent out, the New Hampshire Municipal Association.
Okay, she sent that, it was in a, um.
Yeah, I just saw it at the end, but I didn't print it out, and I thought I printed it out. I thought she's such a familiar, I thought you.
Uh, she didn't, she just left, um, the master plan and that I read through it on, on the screen, but I didn't print it out, and as I read through it, it, it covers, um, I guess I was just checking to make sure that I had accounted for everything that they had brought up there.
Again, my, my interpretation of what it says is, is again, we're back to what I said. Nonetheless, you still have to meet the soil requirements as well. So you can put that, word is in there, and as long as you say, but you're still gonna meet the state requirements and blah, 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 then in fact, you may not be able to build a, a unit.
Right, as far as the, um, soil space, the site-specific, um, with the model ordinance, remember what we were talking about last meeting? Is that it had the model ordinance in, has the section that says, um, that if you have, um, okay, it's, little lot size is for residential developments, developments with greater than four bedrooms for building or for cluster developments, shall be determined as follows. The number of one- and two-bedroom units would have, um, point six of lot size. In other words, you wouldn't, you've got a, a multi-unit development, and let's say there's gonna be eight units in it, and some of the units are going to be small. Now, the way, um, we have it now is that if it's eight units, then you have to have the sufficient soils that will accommodate eight full, uh, eight, you know, eight full units. And what they're saying is that if some of these units are small, you know, you have, uh, that you can have a smaller, a lot, a, a lot of smaller lot size for that, and that three-bedroom units would only be point eight-three, and that four-bedroom units would be one, and if it's more than four bedrooms, then you would have to have, you know, proportionately more soils for it.
This only, this does not refer to multiple, multiple, you know, this is only referring to.
For the accessory apartments, right, as I said, we've got several issues here, which is, which we have to wrap our brains around.
But doesn't this also refer to the fact that this is the law as of June first, nineteen, twenty seventeen?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Right, and we all accommodate that.
Right.
That's what we're doing.
We just need to make sure that what we have in our materials accommodates that, and, and it does allow for some manipulation of, of what you allow as long as you don't, uh, reduce the numbers and amounts to below a certain level.
Didn't they say seven hundred and fifty, whatever it was?
They said, they were recommending a maximum of seven fifty, no minimum.
Yeah.
Our, our.
No, they're saying no, less than.
Your maximum can't be less than seven fifty.
Can't be less than seven fifty, and our maximum is a thousand.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the maximum can't be less than.
Right.
That's what it said.
I was just reading that again, I'm, I'm pretty sure, let's see, an ordinance may establish size limits, but it may not limit the ADU to less than seven hundred and fifty square feet. A minimum size is probably unnecessary, but including a maximum is a good idea, so someone with a fifteen-hundred-square-foot residence cannot add a five-thousand-square-foot ADU, yep.
Yeah.
Make sure your maximum is at least seven hundred and fifty.
So it says, just make sure your maximum size is at least seven fifty, and ours is a thousand.
Right, so we're okay.
We have a three fifty minimum, which we don't need. But I, I compared what we have, what we, and what he's recommending. I think there's, uh, just a few changes that would need to be made. But the one thing that, that struck me though is the way that the current, uh, it current, uh, as we says, is that you can build a, an apartment, you can.
Yes.
Whereas here, there's a, a way that you can do what they call a special exception or conditional use permit, so that they would have to get permission to do it come before the board. And my question is, is that a limitation that we want, or just to keep it the way it is, open? And there was really the, there's only a couple things that, that crossed hairs in there, and that was wrong.
Well, what do people think of that, as far as?
I mean, you, you want, want more control in the town if you just, if you did it just by, obviously, special exception.
If you're gonna have special exception, I think you have to, um, spell out what are the conditions that would allow a special exception.
Yeah, probably too.
And I think what we've, um, we've listed out, we've listed out in accessory, um, in section nine, really all of the aspects of it, I don't know, as we would, if we had a special exception, whether we would need, um, even more limitations.
I guess my only question around this is if, if, as you say, you know, it can be built, is, are we, are we assured that all the other planning requirements will be met? If we say, yeah, you can just do this, and we have so many different rules that, that, you know, it can't be within seventy-five feet of this, and it can't be within fifty feet of that, and it's, it's like, all the, I would expect all those things still need to be.
Absolutely.
Met anyways, but.
Because you would have to apply for a building permit when you do that.
I think it's something coming through before a planning board to get a special exception suggests that we're going to create another gauntlet of.
That's, that's my question, do you are or not?
And do you really need that if, if you have all the parameters set that you wish to have available? I think I don't have the answer to that.
Well, the, do we feel if that, having the check of, that has to go through the building inspector? Is that sufficient to make sure that it, um, that it meets all the regulations, because that's, that's what the building inspector does?
Right, regardless of what we do. If the building inspector doesn't do their job, then the property owner can do everything he wants.
But doesn't the building inspector have to go by what we, what we said?
Yes.
Yeah, it goes by what's in the zoning ordinance, in the building codes, and everything else, setbacks.
The question now is that, um, the way it currently states is that if I wanna put an apartment on, and if I meet all these conditions, um, I can get a building permit and I can do it. The, the only exception to that is if you, you put in the ordinance or you put in your writing, special exemption or condition use permit. So that is a gauntlet, exactly, and then, I'm not suggesting that we do that or not do that, I'm just suggesting that, uh, that particular provision is there, and I think you either decide to use it or not use it, and if you don't use it, yes, they're gonna meet everything else to, you know, to build that unit, but we can't just arbitrarily say, you know, I don't like the, you know, the set of your sales, so you can't do it.
Paul, you have to have, if, to grant a special exception, you have to have various, um, aspects that, that the application has to mean, and we have to spell those out. And I don't know what else we would spell out, other than what's in the ordinance already.
It, it's actually pretty thorough, you know, uh, you know, gotta meet with, with the.
Can anybody?
Architecturally, kinda, meet it, can't be different.
Wouldn't an exception go before the ZVA?
Um, if it's exception to what's in the zoning ordinance.
Right.
If they wanna do something that's not allowed by the zoning ordinance, then it goes to the ZVA.
Can anybody think of?
So, I, I guess I'm confused, what?
What, we're talking about putting a special-
It is just another-
It's another layer. And what it currently says is in our ordinance, that if you want to do an apartment addition, you can, as long as you meet all those.
Right.
You could put an extra layer of-
So the special exception is simply putting an accessory apartment? It's not something to do with the apartment itself, it's very from the ordinance, it's just doing it in the first place?
Right. In other words, change-
It's an exception in the original.
To do it by a special exception, we'd have to change all of Section 9, and simply say that you would have to come before the planning board to get a special exception, and the special exceptions are allowed if they meet all of the following criteria. And we have simplified it, actually made it easier for someone to get an accessory apartment by just having it in the zoning ordinance, and so it doesn't-
But I just thought that was interesting, that this was something that was way into the law.
So I guess the question was, can anybody think of anything that's specific to our town that would be different, that we would need to have something like that?
I agree with you totally. It's sort of like, not in my backyard, and I don't know, I don't think that that's what we should be looking at, but I just wanted to point out that, because I didn't know what other people felt. And I think if you did put that in, I mean, you know, down the road, if you had some honorary planning board members, they could, you know, they could squash something like that, so I don't personally feel comfortable with that.
And there are towns without inspection or the process, if it actually had that special exception.
I'm trying to figure out, it's obviously there to enable a particular township to take consideration what is their circumstance? And then is there something within that, that, for example, if everybody has to build everything that looks like a Swiss chalet or something, and that never happens, right?
Can you go down to Washington?
Every single building in a town looks like weather off.
And so if you said, yeah, here's the requirements, and the state statute says all of these things, but here we have, you have to also be able to do this, so yes, you need to get this done, and that has nothing to do with the statute, or, you know, here I say. I don't know, do we have anything like that here that would apply?
And to me, even if we brought someone through that special exception process, ultimately, it's really the building inspector that's going to ensure whether our regulations are followed or not. And so that's the deciding factor, not really us.
And do we feel that that's a strong enough?
Not, no, is, us doing a special, a special exception doesn't strengthen that, I guess is what I'm saying. The building inspector is the controlling element of this.
All right, so as far as lot size, obviously, when we say it had to be two dwelling units for an accessory apartment, that we have to change that.
And is it, there's 9.2.1, is that saying that if the accessory apartment is within or attached, then it doesn't need to be 1.6, it can be 1?
That if, the total number, what I was saying is that if somebody has a big house, they don't need all that space, and so they reconfigure what's in the house to make part of that apartment. And they really aren't changing the number of bedrooms in it. It's still, you know, so it's going to be one bedroom for the accessory apartment, and then three bedrooms are two and two. And then, so they wouldn't need to have any, a larger lot, because-
But if it's attached, doesn't that suggest that they're adding something to it?
Well, it could be that, you know, they've added, attached, maybe added a living room, more living space for that particular apartment. Or it could be a little house, and they put something on. But as far as, so just to be able to cover what the possibility is, your accessory apartment is either going to be totally within, or mostly within, but then some extra, or all of it out, but it's still attached, or it's going to be a separate building, such as the upstairs of the garage, or the barn, or totally separate building.
Well, except for like, this says, the new law defines an accessory unit as a residential living unit that is within or attached to a single-family dwelling that provides independent living facilities for one or more persons, including provisions for sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation on the same parcel of land. So you don't get that if you have already into another, you know, there's not two separate things, if you just put in another living room or another bedroom.
That's totally different. Yeah.
This is creating a new, an apartment, which has, covers all those things. It has a bathroom, it has a kitchen, it has a bedroom. So it's a dwelling unit, a separate dwelling unit. And we define dwelling unit, which is that definition.
I think when you just were describing, somebody might build out an extra living room or something like that, and that's not this.
No.
No, what I'm saying is that to make an accessory apartment, they may feel as that, well, I'm going to carve off this part inside my house, but really, I want to give them a little bit more space in that apartment, so I'm going to expand out a bit. That would still be-
That would be covered here.
That would be covered, that would still be. And so by saying, or attached, it allows them to change the footprint of the building, if needed, to architecturally for the-
And I was just verifying that we were, we wanted to allow them to change the footprint of the building.
I would think, why not? As long as it's within, setbacks and all of that. Because the whole point is to try to get it easier to get accessory, workforce housing. And this is one way of doing it. I don't see any need to put any extra, extra boundaries on it, other than, you know, what everybody else has to go by, such as the soils, soil space, and so on.
Back in this a little bit, I think 1.6 is in it too.
Right.
In 9.5, should that say if attached or within?
What, not, the interior door should be provided between, oh, and an attached?
If, interior door should be provided between the principal dwelling and the accessory apartment, if attached or within.
Right.
Within, okay.
In other words, this is 9.5, not, you know, it's not part of 9.2.1.
No, that's, that's a separate, because they say it has to-
In other words, if the accessory apartment is detached, there's no mandatory door.
Why don't we just say an attached accessory apartment?
Yep.
So that if it's attached, they know.
Okay.
And I think that we might say a semicolon, the door may be lockable, because the state law does say that.
Yes, it does say that.
Do I have a door, it just doesn't have to be locked?
No, we can't say that it has to be unlocked. That's why I didn't even mention it. Because they can do whatever they want, either lock it or unlock it.
But doesn't the law say that it has to be?
No, because we cannot require that it be locked or unlocked.
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't need to say anything about it.
And what, you know what the rationale is between the door?
I don't know, I guess it's fire safety or something. I think also for elderly people, I mean, it's for like-
How is that different than, who are detached?
I think that the two really are about the difference between a legal apartment and this accessory apartment process. If you have a legal apartment, you cannot have a common door that's not locked.
That's exactly right, because what it said in here was that, you know, you didn't want to have a situation where somebody put up a separate apartment attached to the house, and that didn't have a passageway through, which might lead to an absentee owner and a tenant. So that's, it really, that's where I got out of that, is that if we've got, if we've got a way to connect these things, then it's more likely that we're going to have an owner living there, plus whoever else lives there.
I'm not sure I quite follow that, but-
That was sort of the explanation.
I just don't see why a door would force the owner to occupy their house.
No, I think the, really, the real issue around that is that I build this, I build this for my mom. And, you know, we're, we have a good relationship, there's a door, but it's only to keep noise out for her, nothing more than that. Now, I move, I, you know, my mom passes, I decide I want to live down in Florida, somebody else buys it, says, ah, I've got this nice wonderful thing, it's a separate, I can lock it up, and now I can, I can now rent, buy this, rent it, and now I have two separate units, and this is Jackson, and you can make lots of money.
But this is saying you can't do that.
No, you can, and that's the point.
Yes, yes.
And part of, I think, a lot of the language in here is about the eventual conversion process that could or might occur. And comparing that against what this is intending to do.
I just don't see the difference between a locked door and no door. I mean, it just seems like-
In his letter, Johnston says, and I actually read the statute, I don't remember exactly what it said, but the, "An interior door should be provided between the principal dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit, but a municipality shall not require that it remain unlocked. Some municipalities do require a door between the two units, and some require that it remain unlocked as an indirect way to ensure familiar relationship between the occupants." So that's what I-
So I can understand requiring an unlocked door to make it truly a familial relationship. I don't understand why it can be locked, but we still require a door.
Yeah, that's bizarre.
That doesn't make sense. It's the same thing, locked doors, it's the same as a wall.
I have a proposal to change 9.2.1, and just to use the wording that the state uses in their law, which I've come across now. It says, in the new, in the bill, which is SB 146, Roman number V, "The applicant for a permit to construct an accessory dwelling unit shall make adequate provisions for water supply and sewage disposal for the accessory dwelling unit in accordance with RSA 485A38. But separate systems shall not be required for the principal and accessory dwelling unit." So 485A38 basically says that prior to expanding any structure occupying any existing structure on a full-time basis, which would increase the load on a sewage disposal system, the owners of structures shall submit an application. So that way, we're not specifying number of bedrooms, we're just saying, go with the state law. So that if it's right now a two-bedroom place, and they want to add on a one-bedroom unit, it's great if they've gotten approval for a three-bedroom septic, but not great if they've only gotten approval for a two-bedroom septic. And that is in accordance with the state law.
All right.
I don't think we want to specify four bedrooms, because a lot of places have been approved, you know, up on Cairo, Iron Lot, a lot of places have been approved for less than a floor-bedroom unit.
So how would we change it?
And then we say that you really have to have a design for increased septic, right?
Well, I think we just need to refer back to the state law. So if an accessory apartment is, or accessory dwelling, we're not even talking just about apartments, if an accessory dwelling is created, that we need to set the wording so that we're referring back to 485-a38.
485-
-a38, which is what the new ADU law specifies.
Okay, so, give me the wording. If an accessory apartment, the only reason I use accessory apartment is because we have a definition of accessory apartment, which is the same as their accessory-
That's right, yep, we do, okay. Yep, and it doesn't say attached, so we're not worried about whether it's attached or not, great. So the state wording is, "The applicant for a permit to construct an accessory dwelling unit shall make adequate provisions for water supply and sewage." I think we just need to say, "The applicant for a permit to construct an accessory dwelling, accessory apartment shall comply with RSA 485-a38."
What is adequate provisions?
So that it could be allowed to be constructed.
Right, but what is it? We added something that said that an accessory apartment with a septic, there needs to be a design, possible design for increased septic, but the construction of it is not required.
But this is better, because when they, when they're saying that you make adequate provisions, you're saying in accordance with RSA 485A38. So adequate, I guess, is defined by the way you read 485A38.
Right, but I guess that's what I'm asking, what is adequate? You know, is it simply having a design? Is it constructing that septic system?
Well, it says, "Evidence that the existing sewage disposal system meets," so application shall include one of the following. A, "Evidence that the existing sewage disposal system meets the requirements of the department for intended usage or the town's minimum standards for use or occupancy prescribed, whichever is more stringent." Or B, "The design for a new system which meets the requirements of the department for the intended use or the town's minimum standards for use or occupancy, whichever is more stringent."
Okay, that covers it then.
So I think if we simply say, okay, so, something about an accessory apartment, septic for an accessory apartment should comply with requirements of RSA 485A38.
Okay, now, my reason for putting 9.2.1 is to show that you wouldn't, that you could put a, the situation where you could have an accessory apartment in an existing house, and you would not have to have the extra land.
And that may well be true, if you're complying with the 485A38, you might not need extra land. But that would be determined by the building inspector. They also say in here that they recommend that you use the word accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that-
So then we would have to change the whole Section 9, to call it accessory-
Accessory apartment, accessory dwelling unit.
It says right here that it should be amended to use, the, strongly recommended, the zoning ordinance be amended to define accessory dwelling unit in a manner consistent with the new law's definition. If the ordinance currently uses the term in law form or something similar, it should be amended to use the statutory term accessory dwelling unit. So there is no suggestion that the occupants must be related to occupants of the principal dwelling unit.
Right, well, we don't have it as an in-law apartment, we just say accessory apartments, and our definition of the accessory apartments is the same as their accessory dwelling unit. So if we want to change the wording throughout all of Section 9, so that it says accessory dwelling unit, and then change the definition in the definitions section to change it from accessory apartment to accessory dwelling unit.
I think accessory apartment is clearer.
The definition, the standard they're asking- Why is it saying that it has to be done that way?
Right.
Well, if we had it as in-law apartment.
Or something similar it says. Well, the thing by Cordell Johnston says, "The new law defines an accessory dwelling unit, ADU, as a residential unit, et cetera." And it says, "Then they often go by other names, such as accessory apartments or in-law apartments. Whatever a municipality calls them, they must be permitted under the new law." So it sounds like we can still keep it that way if we choose.
Right, and I understand not calling it an in-law apartment, because that does sound like it's specific to family. But I think the public will understand the term accessory apartment better than accessory dwelling unit. Dwelling unit makes it also sound more detached or convenient.
Oh, I don't care, I just, this would have said in here, and that's why we have to-
Where is the wording? What's the wording from? That's the article of somebody's-
The only thing I would say is that-
The Cordell Johnston.
Yeah, the Cordell Johnston.
It's confusing people, because it's between accessory apartment and-
Page three of six.
Between accessory apartment and accessory dwelling unit, and the law now basically calls it the ADU.
Now, we've got this special Jackson version.
Yeah, I think we should, I think it would be much clearer, maybe it's a term that people want to...
Accessory dwelling unit.
But they can see that, and they can refer to the state law that uses that term.
But, and I would say if that RSA that we're going to refer uses the term accessory dwelling unit, then we ought to probably be consistent with any RSA that we refer to. If, if it's, if there was no mention of accessory dwelling unit in what we refer to, then I still don't see a problem keeping it, you know, apartment.
The state law is definitely referring to ADUs, accessory dwelling units.
That's kind of what they're going to be called, the ADUs.
People will worry about ADU is, and they'll look up an article, well, we don't have ADUs.
We don't have ADUs, you know, they have some sort of other such thing.
I'd say accessory apartment is clear within itself, I mean, it's a state. Hey, if the RSA is referred to as accessory dwelling, I think we ought to be consistent.
We could use both terms very easily. You can very easily use, you know, ADU and parentheses, accessory apartment.
That I would find confusing.
I agree with both of you.
I mean, some you could say, you know, sometimes referred to as...
Sometimes referred to as accessory apartment.
Well, we could do that in the title for the section, just saying accessory apartments, also known as accessory dwelling unit.
Right.
And then use the term accessory apartment, and so we wouldn't have to change everything.
Just all the edits?
Yeah, we wouldn't have to edit everything.
Great idea.
Done.
We knew you'd come up with a solution, Sarah.
Gosh, it's my bedtime.
Sarah, what was you saying before?
So, just in the title, it says accessory apartments, and then in a parentheses, you would say, "Also known..."
As ADU, okay.
...as accessory dwelling units.
Yes, yeah. And then put ADU, in case I don't know what that means.
Then you should be good, and then anybody referencing this thing, and I agree with you, because it's a pain in the butt when you look at a document and you go, "Well, this doesn't have anything associated with that other thing that's in this other document," and I don't know if they're talking about the same thing or, but if you cross-reference it, I don't know, you get in trouble with that.
And we need to add that also into the definition.
And, yeah, the ADU thing sounds like some sort of government nonsense.
Or some sort of disease.
I got an ADU over here.
Oh, did you get a flu shot with that?
Exactly.
All right, that takes care of that, guys. So...
Why don't you register?
So did we determine how we want to word the 9.2 or 9.2.1 in terms of septic?
Yeah, I just, we need to relate that back to lot size, unless it doesn't matter. If someone wants to have an accessory apartment, even though they're just reconfiguring rooms inside a big house to make it into two dwelling units, that they still would need 1.6.
I think it's sufficient to simply say something like, "In accordance with state law."
But state law does not refer to the site-specific lot sizing.
Yes, it does, because it talks about the town's minimum standards for use or occupancy, whichever is more stringent. So that refers right back to our Section 6.
Okay, is that, is that what you're reading here?
Separate water and sewer systems, municipality require, not require a separate water dwelling system for the ADU.
It doesn't require a separate one, but it does require that the existing sewage disposal system meets the requirements of either the department or the town.
This is the new law that's taking place in June, and that's, and that's another one.
But the new law, the new law says that this shall comply with RSA 485-A38. And RSA 485-A38 specifies that the system has to comply with the town regulations. So if we're saying that there's some kind of...
That sounds circular.
What was that?
That sounds a little circular.
Well, basically, maybe, maybe we need to, I was also, what we have presently, it says that the lot on which accessory dwellers, sufficient to accommodate at least two dwelling units, according to the requirements of Section 6. So what we could do in Section 6, which we still need to hit, is saying that, just refer back to Section 6, and then cover that as far as the lot size, would then refer to the number of bedrooms that are in the dwelling unit.
But would you consider that created by a subdivision? This isn't going to be a subdivision, adding a unit, accessory.
Right.
But we have it on here, it's created by a subdivision.
I think it should specify, 9.2 should say, "The lot on which the accessory apartment is proposed is a sufficient size to accommodate water and septic systems in accordance with RSA 485-a38."
In Section 6 as well?
Definitely say in Section 6, because RSA 485-A38 says the town's requirements.
But requirements for septic systems, not for a lot size.
Right.
So I'm talking about lot size here.
And the lot size will comply, so that, I mean, it's the same thing. We're saying that, that if we're putting in 485-A38, that the septic disposal system will meet the town's minimum standards. And isn't that the same?
But it's how, no, it isn't. Septic, we don't have town standards for the septic system. We have town standards for the minimum size of the lot as to be related to the soils, and the whole soils, that, that regulation, which goes from the soils to lot size, is derived from the soil's ability to take care of the nitrate. And to keep the nitrate from polluting the groundwater.
But that is our minimum standard.
Our minimum standard, okay, it's our minimum standard for lot size, it's not our minimum standard for, we don't...
Then how do you base septic?
Well, the septic's based on the state.
The state. The state determines what, where your septic system is.
And our lot size standards happen to exceed what the state is going to calculate as required based on the septic.
Exceed a little bit.
A little.
Yeah, but they exceeded the lot. Ours were a lot different, much more stringent than the state's was, and why?
Okay, I'm going to tell you what the difference is, because the state requires...
Discuss this, I can't remember what.
Okay, the state, for instance.
But we could also just require a larger lot size for there to be an accessory apartment if we wanted.
Just leave it at 1.6, because that means that...
1.6, what, dwelling size?
1.6.
Based on soil, right?
Based on soils, because accessory apartment can't be more than two bedrooms. So, a two-bedroom, according to the site-specific soils-based, that if you have a two-bedroom unit, one or two-bedroom unit, you only need 0.6 of the lot size that is in the table for lot size by soils.
Really sounds complicated.
But I think what, the other way we could do it is just say, it can be a single lot size, not 1.6, as long as it depels all other things, but do we want to do that? Or do we want, because I, to me, it depends somewhat on whether it's a mother-in-law living in that apartment, or whether it's being rented out as a, you know, a separate apartment.
To a whole family.
To a whole family, but it changes the use of that property, you know, increases the usage of the property in terms of traffic, in terms of, so I think there's some rationale to, you know, to want a larger lot, and however you make that happen, if there's going to be an accessory apartment. Counterbalanced by the desire to make accessory apartments easier to build.
Okay, so here's a pretty important point. "One accessory dwelling unit shall be allowed without additional requirements for lot size, frontage, space limitation, or other controls beyond what will be required for a single-family dwelling without accessory dwelling unit." So we can't specify, as far as I can see, 1.6.
You can, if, if we have in Section 6 delineate that the lot size is dependent on the number of bedrooms you have, which pushes us down to what I put for 6.1.4, which is taking the number straight out of the model ordinance that is in the soils-based lot sizing document, which we refer to.
This also says on here, bedroom limit, "Municipality may not limit an accessory building unit to only one bedroom."
Right, we aren't.
This means, of course, you can impose, may impose a two-bedroom unit.
But it can be more than, than two bedrooms, that's what that means?
Yes.
You can put a limit of two. You can't put a limit of one, you could put a limit of three.
We have a limit of two, right now.
So here it goes.
And also on the Ethan, it talks about the increased lot sizes, "May not impose additional requirements for lot size, frontage, space limitations, or other controls beyond what should be required by a single-family dwelling unit with an accessory dwelling unit." For example, the ordinance requires one acre and 100 feet of frontage for a single-family dwelling, it cannot require two acres and 200 feet for a single dwelling with an ADU.
Right. So I think that's important. We can't do the 1.6.
Except for detached.
Yep. I'm sorry, except for what?
If, if the accessory, according to this, accessory apartment, the ADU is detached, then it can require additional lot size. Makes sense to me, and I mean, that clearly is confusing.
Clearly except for...
So do we want to break it down into attached and detached? Is that the way it ought to be ordered?
Well, I think that's the way it is ordered in the state.
The state doesn't say anything about whether it's attached or detached. They do say that, I think they say that you don't have to...
In this, in some areas it says that we can require additional lot area for detached.
Yeah, it says, "A municipality is not required to, but may permit detached accessory dwelling units. Detached dwelling units shall comply with the requirements of any municipal ordinances or regulations pursuant to 67472." And that may increase, require an increased lot size.
Well, I think what you're saying is that you're not really interested in trying to get this 1.6 thing for the attached, but you definitely would like to see it for the detached.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to find it.
Okay.
I think we cannot require 1.6, I agree with that too, we cannot require 1.6 for an attached accessory apartment.
So then we have a...
But we can require 1.6.
And then we have some side note, we want to do that, then we decide.
Okay, that's what I'm, I'm waiting for. I can see the usage issue, but I can also, we do want to promote things like accessory apartments to, you know, to make more affordable housing. I mean, I guess personally, I probably would swing towards that side, I might give up a little bit on that.
I wasn't quite sure I was interested.
Well, so what do we do if we say in Section 6, a rationale for Section 6 is to ensure that there be adequate septic, the soils provide adequate septic perking, or whatever one calls it. Or something in there saying that the reason for having this minimum lot size is because of Jackson's topography and, you know, huge quantity builders and all that sort of stuff.
You mean giving a rationale for...
Yeah, so that it's clear that our minimum lot size directly relates to our requirements for septic.
So that would be adding that in as an introduction to Section 6.
Because then that comes right, then that, if we can have that, then that relates to the state RSA 485, which talks about the town's minimum standards for use or occupancy.
Okay. I'm sure that helps.
To say minimum lot size, introduce it with these minimum standards, provide other requirements for use or occupancy of residential properties in Jackson, or something like that.
Would the state requirement for septic allow a septic system in soils that couldn't handle?
Well, apparently they allow it a little bit more readily than we do.
I feel like we're being a little disingenuous, because really the soils thing, I think, was more about making lots bigger for development purposes, or overdevelopment purposes.
To prevent overdevelopment.
As opposed to being concerned about the state requirements for septic.
But they ended up not being, you know, we went from two-acre zoning to the...
Right, because that's snob zoning, and that can be challenged.
Right, and as it turned out, our lot, our minimum lot size allows greater intensity of usage, right, than, than the two-acre would have?
In some cases, yeah.
Depends on that.
But, I mean, in more instances than not, maybe, I think.
But what I'm saying, if we are saying that we use this soils-based lot-sized calculation to ensure that there's, you know, proper septic, we're in a sense saying that, you know, we truly believe that argument, and we're in a sense saying that the state does not, you know, does not ensure proper septic. And I'm not sure that's a bad argument, I, and I think...
They're pretty close.
Right, and I think we use the soils thing not because we don't trust the state's septic engineering, we use the soils thing because we just want larger lots.
Okay, I didn't realize that. My understanding was that we've got all these steep slopes, we've got huge builders, we've got different things that are standard than the rest of the state, and therefore our standards allow for that and acknowledge that we need a little bit more land than the average.
And I may be wrong, but my assumption is the state also takes into account those factors.
Yeah, they do.
And so, for us to say that we're doing something different than what the state requires would suggest that the state doesn't, isn't doing it properly, and I'm not sure that we can make that argument.
Well, if, for the state to say, "The town's minimum standards for use or occupancy," or the departments, the requirements of the department. So...
The state's just allowing us to use the soils study as a more stringent septic requirement. I'm just saying that if we're, if we're going to provide an explanation of our soils thing and say that it's because of our special topography, I just think the state takes into account that kind of special topography.
And you think we'd lose that argument in court, so we shouldn't go to the...
I don't think, I just think we're being disingenuous, I think we're claiming it's something that it really isn't.
Okay.
I don't think it's legally wrong, I just think we're just, we're saying it's something when that doesn't quite make sense, because the state does take into those, take into account those factors. I'm assuming that, I don't...
Well, can you just rely on the state, on the department, as they call it? They don't really put, it's not a capital D, so I don't know exactly what the department is. I'm guessing it's DES. But I haven't, I mean, obviously, we've got to deal with the way the state phrases it, we've got to work with the state law, and if we don't want to have our own town standards...
Well, I think, I'm not suggesting that we change our standards, I'm just saying that we shouldn't say that our standards are different than the state because of factors that the state actually does take into account.
The status is we don't have our minimum, we don't have standards, right? We don't have standards for septic.
For septic.
Because we're using the state's standards. Therefore, maybe we should just word it.
Well, we know the soil standards encompasses the state standards, and I guess it's my understanding.
Well, the site-specific soil standards take into account a lot more factors than the state standards do. So as far as defining, both of them have six categories of soils, and they break it down as to the minimum lot size for the steepness, and the steeper it gets, the larger lot you require. And as you're down into the, with the better soils, difference, you know, so there's a chart for each of them, and the difference between, sort of, the best situation for the state is 30,000 feet, square feet, and for soils basis, 31,750. So it's close, but then as you get into some of the more difficult situations, the soils, site-specific soils, gives you a much larger minimum lot size. As you get into difficult, where the bedrock is close to the surface, or...
Is that, is that because the state doesn't take into account certain factors, or because the state isn't looking at the land in such a detail, in such resolution as we want? No, do they, are they looking at...
I don't know what the state is looking at to get those.
Right. So we might have an explanation saying that because of that high variability in soils and, you know, topography in Jackson, we've chosen to use this way of determining lot size, so as to ensure proper septic.
But I hear an awful lot from people that we really are much more stringent in our septic system and our soils.
People say that, but...
And using soils-based... But what does Burris say on it? I mean, what does he say? He's the engineer, and he's the one who looks at this kind of stuff. What does he base it on?
But it's a, as Sarah just explained, in some instances, it's pretty much the same, in other instances, it's a little bit, it's a little more...
We have, our regulations are relative to minimum lot size. And as far as septic system, what you, the septic system design you put in, how big it has to be, the leach field, et cetera, that's all state regulations. So all that we do is regulate the minimum lot size for a single-family dwelling.
Two acres.
No, it's based on the soils, whatever soils you have. If you have category one soils, and it's only 15% slope, you can have 35,250 square feet for your lot size, which is less than an acre. And if you happen to be with soils that are relatively, the bedrock is relatively close to the surface, and it's 25% slope, you can't put, you can't put your dwelling on it.
Okay, so we have, though, done that up in Topo Tyrol, where we...
But before, there was any...
No, I mean recently, within the past five years, a house went up there with complete bedrock.
Well, if it's a, if it's a, an existing approved, you know, developable lot, then...
It's grandfather.
Yeah.
You can't do anything without it.
Then they do have that right unless, unless it can't comply at all.
If it's a 16 lot, you have to be able to...
If it comply, if it can comply with state regulations, then Jackson has to permit it, as I understand it. So how about the wording, that "application for approval of an attached accessory apartment shall comply with minimum lot size requirements in Section 6 of Jackson's zoning ordinance and with RSA 485-838," period. The accessory, you should put the ADU on there. Right?
Here's, the municipality may not impose additional requirements for lot size, frontage, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
If it's an attached dwelling, if it's a non-attached dwelling, you could even eliminate that.
That's why I put in the word detached, so that it will comply with the existing minimum lot size requirements for, let's say, for a single-family home.
Okay.
On that lot.
And then you're going to do one of them.
Yes, we've got the 1.6 for the detached.
That's showing we want to do that.
Can we tell people they can't have a detached apartment on there?
No, I would propose that we don't increase the lot size for detached.
Don't increase it for detached?
Okay.
So does it make it easier to have it?
Not have the 1.6.
Right. I'm not saying that it has to be that way, I'm just saying that that would be my personal proposal, that we, in terms of increasing lot size because of increased usage and making these kinds of things more readily available, I side on the more readily available.
Okay, I think I agree with that.
Along with all the other...
All right, so what we're doing is then replacing, 9.1...
9.2.
9.2.
Yep.
With what you just read.
Okay, I'll write that out and have it in the minutes, and people can revise it and so on.
Okay. And then the other thing that we needed was the interior door, and then I think everything that we've got in the accessory apartment section complies with the new law.
Great. And finally, the end is Section 6.
Okay, there were two issues in Section 6. One is when we switched over, actually, there are three. We switched over, we had in the original minimum lot size, the special, like a special exception, where we were looking at a subdivision where somebody had a big piece of land, and he just wanted to divide it in half to go to his two sons. Or he wanted to cut off a separate lot to be able to sell that to get the money for it. And that we didn't see that he needed to have the whole thing, to go through the expense of having all of the soils examined, a complete soils map. And that if it was clearly, the lot was clearly going to be fine, you know, it's much larger than, than what minimum lot sizes were. So we said, then you can use just the information that's in the Soil Survey, Carroll County Soil Survey, which has the different, from that, you can actually go to the, pretty close to what the soils, soils-based lot size is, these different categories are, there's actually a list of all the different soils types that are in those categories, and those soils types are on the Carroll County Soil Survey. The difference is that in the Soil Survey, it's not, the boundaries aren't necessarily all that precise, and that the error margin is, depends on whether it's medium intensity or, or low intensity, as opposed to high intensity. But if you have a big lot, and it's, the whole thing is Marlowe, okay, Marlowe is category three, and let's say that, you can tell by topo, is that it's, let's say, 15 to 25%, and so that would be 67,000 square feet, and obviously, this is six acres, which is way more than that. So it doesn't have to do a soil survey because it's obvious. So that's what we were trying to do with this 6.1, 0.2. But the way it got truncated in the, when we did the change, is that it, it could be interpreted, and it was, for one of our subdivisions that we saw, this, the one that out on Townhall Road, where he just used it. And it was a little on the edges of whether it was really applicable. So I wanted to get it...
Should we not define clearly exceeds? An additional 25% or maybe? Is in that situation, Townhall Road, you know, what constitutes?
Yeah. It was in the gray area.
Is it 2%?
It'd be in the gray area, no matter what we put, but I feel like we ought to have some defined...
10%?
Or we could say clearly exceeds such as, you know, it's given a situation where that would be clearly exceeding, as opposed to make...
I don't think they carry much weight, if you're saying such as.
Okay.
You know, what's the difference between 2% and 25%?
Okay.
It exceeds, I think if we, if we need to specify a number, I hadn't thought about how clearly exceeds doesn't really spell anything out, but we probably should. But the major...
Clearly, yeah, I'm just listening, I don't have any history with soils. I'm listening to that, clearly exceeds, by whose standard?
Yeah, is 2% enough? Maybe not.
I mean, none of that makes any sense to me, I mean, none of it makes any sense. Somebody saying clearly exceeds, it's like, well, maybe if you have 300 acres, yeah, it clearly exceeds, but we're not talking about that. We're talking about situations where we're talking about acres, or one acre, or two acres, and none of that clearly exceeds.
So they'd have to do it.
You'd have to do it, so is there, is there any kind of margin of error for the state? You know, for the, for the, not the high intensity, but for the, the, well, that's the intensity. If the margin of error is 25%, then it probably ought to exceed by 25%. Still, when we're doing all this soil stuff, to explain, if it's a rock, you know, if something's being cut in different places, and it's bedrock, or sloped, or whatever, and, you know, it's got three square feet that are flat, it's, it could be a large, thick piece of land, and maybe a piece of it be clearly exceeding, and not at all be...
But you're using the Soil Survey, they have all of the, you know, the slopes in it as well, is taken into account. And so if it's a Marlowe, they use the letters A, B, C, D, E, E being excessive.